Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wannabe Planning and Zoning Board meeting. I'd like to call a meeting to order. I guess you all stand in place, and we'll just goodbye.
Allegiance to the Saint.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act has been given by the Court in the following matter. Post it on the bulletin board in the Borough's Office, the email to the retrospect, and to carry the post. Our first quarter of business this evening will be our swearing-in of our new members. Mr. Waldenstein and Mr. Muselli will be sworn in next month as they are excused. But, Mr. Rowan, if you would do the honors for...
Yes. Harry and Everett, shout if you both stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. You'll insert your name after I say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Salmously swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Saint.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Saint.
I defer solemnly swear.
I defer solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
As a member of the Planning, Zoning Board.
As a member of the Planning, Zoning Board.
Of the Borough of Wannabe.
The Borough of Wannabe.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And help be God.
Help be God.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay. So we have roll call, please.
Yes. We are...
Yes.
Mr. Alperli.
Here.
No, I don't think that's going to be an issue. Ms. Gushen. Here. Mr. Buckeye.
Here.
Mr. Manal.
Here.
Ms. Farmer is excused.
Mr. Ozon.
Here.
Erica Pass is excused. Councilman Waldenstein is confused. He is confused. Lawrence Waldenstein is excused.
Ms. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Muselli is excused.
Mr. Rowan.
Here.
Mr. Bob.
Here.
Okay. Next order of business is our reorganization. We're going to open up the floors for nominations for chairperson.
I would nominate Kenny Clea.
Second.
Are there any other nominations on the floor? I'll entertain a motion to close nominations.
I make the motion to close nominations.
Second. Okay. Roll call this morning.
Are you ready?
I'm standing.
Mr. Alperli.
Yes.
Ms. Gushen.
Yes.
Mr. Buckeye.
Yes.
Mr. Manal.
Yes.
Mr. Ozon.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
That's it. Okay. Second, we will have nominations for vice chairperson. I'd like to nominate Mr. Alperli.
Second.
Motion by... Any Clea Hammer seconded by Ms. Gushen. Are there any other nominations? At this point, I will entertain a motion to close nominations for vice chair.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Gushen?
No.
Sorry.
That's okay. Just from the top.
Ms. Clea Hammer?
Yes.
Mr. Alperli?
Standing.
Ms. Gushen?
Yes.
Mr. Buckeye?
Yes.
Mr. Manal?
Yes.
Mr. Ozon?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll have a resolution providing for the appointment of second vice chairperson. I would like to nominate Ms. Gushen.
Second that motion.
Okay. Motion by Clea Hammer seconded by Alperli. Are there any other motions on the floor? At this point, I'll entertain a motion to close nominations for second vice chairperson.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Clea Hammer?
Yes.
Mr. Alperli?
Yes.
Ms. Gushen?
Standing.
Mr. Buckeye?
Yes.
Mr. Manal?
Yes.
Mr. Ozon?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have a resolution providing for the appointment of solicitor. I would like to nominate the appointment of David Rowan.
I'll make the second head now, Ms. Gushen.
Motion made the second. Are there any other nominations on the floor? Okay. We have roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. May I entertain a motion to close... Excuse me. To close the appointments for solicitor.
I make that motion?
Second.
Your motion made seconded. Now, we have roll call, please.
Ms. Clea Hammer?
Yes.
Mr. Alperli?
Yes.
Ms. Gushen?
Yes.
Mr. Buckeye?
Yes.
Mr. Manal?
Yes.
Mr. Ozon?
Yes.
And Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks again for the appreciative report and the comments that you still have.
We appreciate everything you do for David.
Thank you very much.
You're most welcome. Next, we have a resolution providing for the appointment of engineer for 2024. I'd like to submit item associates, Steve Bobb.
Second.
Are there any other... Are there any other applications for applicants we'd like to put there? I will... It's for a motion to close nominations.
Motion to close nominations. Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Clea Hammer?
Yes.
Mr. Alperli?
Yes.
Ms. Gushen?
Yes.
Mr. Buckeye?
Yes.
Mr. Manal?
Yes.
Mr. Ozon?
Yes.
Thank you very much, board. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Bobb. We appreciate you. Okay. And the next resolution we have is providing for the appointment of secretary for 2024. Ms. Pinto is out tonight with having a knee replacement, but I would like to put him for Ms. Joyce Pinto.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for secretary? Okay. I would like...
Second.
We're going to close nominations for secretary. We have roll call, please.
Ms. Clea Hammer?
Yes.
Mr. Alperli?
Yes.
Ms. Gushen?
Yes.
Mr. Buckeye?
Yes.
Mr. Manal?
Yes.
Mr. Ozon?
Yes.
And Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Great. And Bethany, thank you for filling in in her absence. I appreciate it very much. Next, we're looking at 2407 as a resolution providing for the designation of first and second alternate members for 2024. We have Ms. Burke as first alternate, and we have Mr. Muselli as second alternate. And that's not a nomination thing, so I think we just do roll call at that break.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Clea Hammer?
Yes.
Mr. Alperli?
Yes.
Ms. Gushen?
Yes.
Mr. Buckeye?
Yes.
Mr. Manal?
Yes.
Mr. Ozon?
Yes.
And Ms. Burke?
You're welcome. Thank you. Next, we're looking at 2308, a resolution establishing regular meeting dates and official newspapers. There's no motion on that. I think we just do roll call.
Yeah. Just a motion to approve.
Yep. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Clea Hammer?
Yes.
Mr. Alperli?
Yes.
Ms. Gushen?
Yes.
Mr. Buckeye?
Yes.
Mr. Manal?
Yes.
Mr. Ozon?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, I would like to see Ms. Burke to replace Ms. Farmer, who is excused this evening. So, along up, if you like. Bring your name, please. Bring your stuff. If you want. Okay. So we will have a full forum of seven this evening. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes from November 29 meeting. Are there any questions or concerns on the minutes? Will I motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion for process.
Motion by Mr. Alperli seconded by Mr. Manal. Call favor.
Aye.
Good. Under new business, just I think this is a receiving file, Steve, but you'll tell me for sure. Did you get copied on this from PSE and J? I don't think there's any action required by us.
No, it wasn't copied, but the NJDEP land use settlement requires any land use applications regarding such as wetlands, letter of interpretation, flood hazard, that the planning board is automatically copied on.
Would you like this for your file?
Yes. Thank you.
You're most welcome.
Just receive your file.
Receive your file. Okay. Also, under new business, I just want to put this on the record that we received a letter of incompletion from Mr. Bobb's office. So I guess we have to find out whether we need to re-advertise on that, Steve? That was on the ROPAS application?
If they advertise, they shouldn't advertise, but they were going to have to re-advertise.
Yes. If the original deed was incomplete, yeah, they would have to re-advertise.
And it would not be... It would not hurt the stop-the-clock on the application from submission and taking the vote, just recognizing that the application is incomplete.
I agree with Steve, yeah. Just so they can have any argument for all of that.
Right. Exactly. Yeah, definitely. So with that, we'll entertain a motion to stop the clock. Am I pronouncing that right? Was it...
That's right. Just deem the application incomplete.
Okay. So we're going to deem that application incomplete.
I make a motion to...
Okay. Second it. Roll call, please.
Ms. Clea Hammer?
Yes.
Mr. Alperli?
Yes.
Ms. Gushen?
Yes.
Mr. Buckeye?
Yes.
Mr. Manal?
Yes.
Mr. Ozon?
Yes.
And Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Just a little bit of housekeeping there. Next application we have is 2401, which is an application for a use variance, site plan amendment for a pickup window with drive-up lane at 10 East Clemens Bridge Road. So the cottonmouth...
Hi, everybody. I am Davy Delucco. I'm the attorney of the local Delucco, Lewis, and Burke. And I'm here tonight representing the applicant, 10 Clemens Bridge LLC. I saw you all in the fall of 2022. When we were here for this application previously, we're back with amended approvals. Just a little bit of overview of my tenure here before we get into the testimony. So the property is Clemens Bridge Road, it's right across the road from where we are sitting. It is the proposed Cottonmouth Dispensary, which is a cannabis retail dispensary, which has a Class 5 retail license from the Cannabis Regulatory Commission of the state of New Jersey. We were here in September of 2022, and we got conditional use approval. Your ordinance, which is section 395-26, says that this property, which is actually in your commercial district, is also in an overlay district called the Cannabis Establishment Conditional Use Overlay District. A mouthful, but that's what it's called. And that's section 26 of your land use ordinance. And as you recall, when you have a conditional use, that means the use is permitted if the applicant meets each of the stated conditions. We had a hearing in September of 2022. This board concluded that we did meet all the conditions of the conditional use ordinance. You adopted a resolution on October 26, which is resolution number 22-18. That was conditional use approval. You told us to come back for site plan approval because there were some additional details about it that the board wanted to see. So we came back on October 26 of 2022, presented the site plan application for this proposed dispensary. It was a law office before that time, St. Oliva Rentes, and you granted site plan approval on October 26, and you adopted resolution 22-20, I believe, for the site plan approval. Since that time, my client has purchased the property, commenced construction. You're probably aware of that. They're close to finish, getting closer to opening, hoping to open by the end of February, cluster limousines. And in the course of doing that, this is obviously a new industry, in New Jersey, you're all aware of that. My client discovered through contacts with the state, contacts with the industry, that other dispensaries were having a lot of success, albeit new success, because it's new everywhere in New Jersey, with pickup windows. And so they decided to pursue approval of a pickup window here. And you'll see, you have the plans, and we're going to provide some testimony momentarily, but this is a pickup window like you would see in a pharmacy, as opposed to in a fast-food restaurant, not a drive-through window. In this situation, a customer who wants to purchase a cannabis product and pick it up at the window has to preorder it online, and they'll have a time assigned, a window of time during which they'll pick up the order. That person will then come to the pickup window, pay after they present ID as required by law, pay for the product, and leave. If they... When they place the order, they have to select either the pickup window or to come inside the store. So when you come to the store, you'll either go to the pickup window, or you'll park your car, and you'll walk inside. When you preorder, you have to select one method of pickup. It's one of the other. So we're proposing to add that. It will not change who we are or the intensity of the use. It's going to change the option of how you pick it up. You'll either park your car and walk in, or drive up to the window and pick it up. You will not be allowed to drive up to the window like you would in a fast-food restaurant and order a cheeseburger. You can't do that here. You can't pull up to the window and say, "I'll have some cannabis product." You have to preorder. So as a result of that, we filed this application, my client filed it, and there are two approvals that we seek tonight. One is amended site plan approval, because we added a pickup window to the wall of the building on the east side of the site, that side, I think, from where we sit. And there's a few changes to the plan, not many, and they've been noted in Mr. Bobb's January 23 letter. And Mr. Bobb points out that we've applied for a use variance. Your ordinance doesn't specifically say that a dispensary can have a pickup window. It doesn't say you can't. It's silent on that. And Mr. Bobb's office has interpreted it as if it doesn't say it's permitted, then we deem it prohibited, so you need a use variance. So we've applied for a use variance. We've noticed for a use variance. We're here for a use variance to permit a pickup window. Interestingly, in the commercial district, we allow a lot of uses, including some conditional uses that include drive-throughs. Like a drive-through restaurant's a conditional use. And that doesn't mean we don't need a use variance, but my point is, in the commercial district, you can have a drive-through if you meet certain conditions. So this isn't going to change the nature of the use. It's just going to change or offer some efficiencies and allow there to be one extra way to pick up the product if you preorder. So we're here for a use variance, and we're here for amended site plan approval. There's no change to the conditions in your conditional use ordinance. In other words, we haven't made any changes to the plan or operations, which would now require us... Would now leave us in a situation where we don't meet the conditions, so we don't believe we need any new conditional use approval. There are no new variances associated with these changes, other than the use variance that I just mentioned. The changes are very limited, and again, the purpose is really for improved efficiencies so that we can move people in and out more quickly, and have fewer people park and walk in and walk out. We have Mr. Bobb's letter of January 23. We don't have any objections to the comments in Steve's letter. We're going to address some of those comments in testimony tonight. I have some brief testimony. I hope you'll agree. We have Matthew Holton, who testified as to the operation in 2022. He's a principal of Cottonmouth Dispensary LLC, as well as the applicant. We have Brian Cleary, our civil engineer, who provides a very brief testimony as to plan changes. And then we have a professional planner, Terry Combs, who's also with the company group along with Mr. Cleary, and he'll provide some brief testimony as to the use variance. Last thing before we get into the testimony, just a brief housekeeping. My client filed this application directly, and I noticed in preparing for the hearing that there was no disclosure statement included with the application. So I brought a copy. I'm going to give Mr. Rowan, too, for him and for the borough's file. I'll just read off the fact that the applicant is owned by... So in New Jersey, when you file an application for development, the applicant has to disclose who owns 10% or more of the applicant, so that you, as a board, know who is behind these entities, so patient out of conflict. You know that, and there's... It's intended to promote transparency. So the applicant is owned by John Subasas, who's with me tonight, Nancy Subasas, his wife, Matthew Holton, who's right there, and Alyssa Paizo. Those are the four principals, and I wanted to just make that announcement, just in case any of you would have a conflict as a result of those four people. But that was some housekeeping, so thank you for your patience. David, there's another copy. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowan? I know sometimes we bypassate when there's a use variance and then a site plan amendment, but I don't... She didn't know for that. I think it was very...
Davy, anybody that you're going to use tonight to testify, if they would please stand and raise their right hand? Yeah. So we have Matthew Holton, Brian Cleary, and Terry Combs. Gentlemen, do solemnly swear affirm that testimony you're about to give this board tonight is truthful and accurate, to the best of your knowledge.
I do.
Thank you.
Yes. And Mr. Rowan, I...
And Mr. Bobb.
For the record, I...
You're a sport. So I'll just try to put this at an angle so that we can do this, and then I'll... Is that okay? Matthew Holton, why don't you come on up? I'm just saying, so you speak up a little bit so that we can hear you. Mr. Holton, you were sworn in, and you testified in 2022, correct? Correct. Are you a principal of the applicant and the entity Cottonmouth Dispensary that will operate this dispensary? Yes. And you're familiar with its operations, and is that correct? Yes. And are you going to be responsible for overseeing those operations? Yep. That's correct. Were you present during introductory comments? Yes. Were they accurate? Yes. Will Cottonmouth Dispensary be a tenant at this location? Yes. Do I have that right? Yep. Okay. Is that entity licensed to operate the dispensary? Yes. That is correct. All right. And we're here tonight for the limited purpose of adding the pickup window with some associated site improvement changes, correct? That is correct. Now, is it correct that the pickup window will only be used to fulfill preorders? Yes. I.e., people that order something online before they get to your store? That is correct. So if I'm driving down the street, and I decide I want some cannabis product, and I pull up to the pickup window and say, "I'll have, you know, three whatever," what will they do to me? You would get turned around. You'd be asked to place a preorder before you came. Okay. Or you're welcome to come inside and place an order afterwards. So you might direct that person in? Correct. And they will not be permitted to purchase at the pickup window unless they previously ordered? That is correct. Okay. Can you walk us through how the typical transaction will happen once the car gets to the window? Once the car approaches the window, the ID will be checked before they're given their order, before they're given their preorder. And upon placing the order, they select the window in which they're planning to pick up, so we know when they're going to arrive. So when their order is ready, we check the ID, give them their order, they pay, then we give them their order, and then that's it. And they pay when they get there, correct? Correct. And how long do you expect a typical transaction to take place at the pickup window? It's a matter of minutes. And why are you proposing to add the pickup window? To process our customers' expenses. And so if when someone orders online, they'll either pick pickup window or in-store pickup? Correct. If they want to change that, they have to change that online before they get there to the window? That's correct. Okay. Does this pickup window enlarge your space or change the way you operate, other than how people pick up product? Absolutely not. The time, so the customer will select a time or window of time when they want to pick up? So on the website, when you're placing your order, there's fifteen increments. So every hour, there's four places, and each hour, they can select pickups. And the window is a two-hour pickup window. So we will be able to control how many bars are stacked at a time, how many bars are expected for every... So you testified in 2022 that your store will be open during the hours that's permitted in conditional use ordinance. You remember that? Yes. And will the pickup window have the same hours as the store? Most likely, yes. Okay. But not... It will not exceed what's permitted by ordinance? No. That's all the questions I have. Here's the Holton without this pickup window.
I only have one question. How do you know the arrival of a customer at the pickup window? What's the mechanism?
So they're selecting from the count that they choose to place the pickup order on. They're selecting the timeframe.
But when they pull up? Do you have someone manning that window at all times? Do you have a video camera?
Yes. There is someone manning that window.
Okay. So it's just visual? There's not going to be any intercom?
There's cameras on the lane as well, the pickup lane, so that everyone can see it in the... The people preparing the orders can see that as well.
So my question really is about speakers and intercoms. Is there any speakers or intercoms associated with the window?
I had to check the specs on that? No. I checked my client beforehand. There's the different witnesses, and the answer I got is there are no speakers. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for this witness from members of the board?
So they just... They just come in through St. Clair and go up to the window? Is that how it is? That is correct. And you don't anticipate anything being backed out? We do not. Okay.
Any other question from the board members?
He'll be here if that changes. My next witness is Brian Cleary.
Thank you.
Mr. Cleary, you've been sworn in. Were you the professional engineer that testified at the previous hearings for this location? Yes. And you're a professional engineer, in good standing in New Jersey. You've qualified as a professional engineer for many boards. Is that correct? Correct. Ms. Madam Chair, we ask you to set Mr. Cleary as an expert and professional engineer.
Yes, David.
Thank you. Did you prepare the plan that's on the easel that we marked A1? Yes. Is that the same plan that's submitted with the application? Yes. All right. Were you present during our introductory comments? Yes. Were they accurate? Yes, they were. Can you just briefly tell everybody what's changing compared to the plan that this board previously approved? Sure. I can actually go off Mr. Bobb's letter. He did a good job summarizing the changes. The biggest one is the pickup window on the east side of the building. With that pickup window, we're actually removing some of the existing curving and sidewalk on that side of the building to allow the drive aisle to be closer to the building through the pickup. And on the east side of the pickup lane, we'll have a three-foot wide straight aisle to delineate the pass-through, bypass lane, and the pickup lane. We're proposing a fence along this residential property line. We're relocating a light fixture that was in this aisle, removing it over here, and also adding an additional fixture to help reduce... We showed lights along the south side of the building. Mr. Subasas wants to reduce their intensity for these residences to the rear, so we added an extra fixture on here, on the whole band of light to help make up for the lessening of the building's LED lights. Two new concrete aprons along Clemens Bridge Road. And then landscaping improvements. We added a significant amount of evergreen trees along St. Clair, additional ones along the residential properties, made some species changes with the shrubs along the front of the building. Removed existing evergreen trees along here because there were issues with visibility for anyone coming up St. Clair Road. That's really it. St. Clair Road, I'm sure everyone here probably remembers, but that's a public street up to the point where our property line is, correct? Correct. And that is here. Right there. Now, at that point, on our property, we're going to have one-way circulation heading north, correct? Correct. And there's some striping shown on that plan, Exhibit A1, that's actually extending to the right way. Is that correct? Correct. Are we going to remove that so that there's no striping in the right way? That's the way the applicant wants to proceed without needing approvals from the borough? Yes. Okay. So either there's going to be striping in the right way, in which case the government body has to approve it, or we'll reduce the striping so that it's only within the private property that the applicant... Correct. So a car coming in to the pickup window will either access the pickup window from the interior of the site if they come from the pipe or Clemens Bridge Road, or if they happen to come down St. Clair Road. Yes. And what's the purpose of the striping that you just talked about? It's just to delineate the lane. Okay. Is there enough stacking room from the pickup window to the rear of the property or that southern banway? So from the pickup window to the actual property line, it's about 60 feet, so that should be three cars. But if you extend it to this driveway, you can squeeze another car in, so four cars would now impacting any circulation outside of the pickup lane. You mentioned a fence along the southern banway. You just pointed where that's proposed? Yes. Is it correct that that's proposed because one of the neighbors asked Mr. Subasas to add a fence there? Correct. To extend the fence that's to the east? Correct. And is it correct that we've agreed to do that? Yes. Now, on your plan, is it correct that that fence is slightly over the line onto that adjoining property, which I think is lots 7 to 701? Yes. By default. And Mr. Bobb's letter asks us to get permission for that. Is it correct that we'll either get permission for that, or we won't install the fence? Correct. We're installing it at that neighbor's request? Correct. Okay. And then there was a comment in Steve's letter about street trees on this plan not being exactly what was supposed to be approved on the prior plan. Can you address that? So there are six street trees along St. Clair Road in addition to the evergreens that are on our property. They will be reflected on the revised plans that are submitted into Mr. Bobb's office. They're already installed. They just have to be updated on this plan. Okay. And how is that different than what's proposed? I just want to make sure that was clear on that. So they will... Then what was approved, I should say? What was approved was the six street trees, the seven streets. But we originally showed them on the subject property. Based upon feedback or in construction, Mr. Subasas decided to enhance the evergreen buffer.
but by doing that, wanted to make sure the street trees had enough room to grow, so we pushed them into the right way closer to the curb line.
Is it correct that we will comply with remaining comments in Mr. Fox's January 23 letter?
Yes.
Thanks, Brian.
The only question I have, it's either or, so right now the striping improvements are already installed in the public right of way.
Oh, they are?
They're there, they're built, everything else. It is a good plan, it is, as you designed this, Clary, it's a good plan on where they're located. Will you make that request to the borough?
Sure.
And then of course, if the borough does not approve, then you will remove it, but it's already installed, it's actually in the best location. I'd rather see it, say where it is, so you'll make that request.
No, no problem.
So Damien, what you said before that you were going to remove, we're going to leave.
So Mr. Fox's letter asks us to get permission, we're going to comply with that request, we're going to seek permission. If they don't give us permission, we'll eliminate the striping that's within the right of way.
So the good thing is about where the striping is, as represented on the plan where it currently exists, that when you're driving up, you can see it, you can see the drive-through lane versus if the drive-through lane let her be tucked behind.
Is he there? See anybody there?
Yeah.
Anything else for Mr. Clary, Art Junior? Any questions from members?
I can ask a quick question.
Sure.
Back to our audience. Now, you said about your time windows, like in fifteen-minute increments?
Yes.
What's the most you can foresee in a fifteen-minute increment?
Well, just to clarify, they have fifteen-minute increments to choose from, once they choose that increment, they're giving a two-hour window, so an hour before and after that fifteen-minute increment.
So how many people would you expect coming to your drive-through lane at any one time?
We expect to be able to, basically we're arranging the pickups where it's reasonable to expect, we're going to make sure there's never more than four of us stacked.
So you can control the windows?
Correct.
Correct, exactly.
And we can shut off certain windows that are getting too filled because we're going to stack those cars.
All right, thank you. James Woodson?
With this new part with the drive-through and all that, is there any new additions with signage and so forth? We're talking about striping and all, but how do you, wording for the pickup window, is there any new signs being directed on the property?
There is directed signage, I think coming against those at the corner, whether there are people on which side of the pickup windows?
Well, let me make sure those are on the plans, Mr. Clary, why don't you come along back up, please?
The only thing is represented so far is just pickup lane painted in that area.
On the painting, on the asphalt?
Is there always no additional signage and so forth?
But is that the only signs that's striking, asphalt striking, or are we going to put a directional sign?
We could add a directional sign for the southern driveway to make sure everyone knows as they're traveling east on that southern driveway to make a left to get to the pickup lane.
Any new signage on the building?
Pardon?
Any new signage on the building?
No. No, the signage is not changing, the identification signs are not changing. We have no objection to adding a directional sign in the best location that Stephen and Brian come up with.
Of the, of the, of the.
So that's directional signs right up to the window?
That's a good idea, because when you enter in from Clemens Bridge Road, if you don't, if you're not, when you go around, you see the handicap spots are there, and I think that's a good idea there.
And while we have Mr. Clary, so Mr. Clary, you'll probably put that where, in the front island somewhere? Where would you, where would you put that?
Probably put it in this straight aisle.
Put it in the straight aisle, and if it's a bollard?
And then maybe a second one as you're traveling.
Perfect, and these would be the small directional signs that comply with our ordinance under thirty inches, all that.
Two feet by one foot or something.
And while you're up again, bollards, did you have consideration of the bollards on the front entrance?
Along here?
In that flat flush concrete area?
I will have to defer to Mrs. Sabas, I know we'll be installing concrete bumpers while we need to exchange it.
Right, but I think in our letter, we recommended, because the door and that concrete sidewalk is all flush, I understand you're going to do the concrete bumpers, is there anything to protect a car from just driving right through the front door? Right now, there's nothing.
We'll chat about that, I'll bring up my next witness.
I just want to make sure, you said you agreed, was that the thing, I just want to make sure that's agreed.
Fair comment, I thought your bollards in your letter were referencing a different location, so I want to make sure we're all clear on. Brian?
So Mrs. Sabas did indicate that there will be a decorative landscaping element there with bollards around it, the chains to enhance the front area, so we'll provide something.
I don't, I don't mind, I'm not opposed to the decorative landscaping and the decorative.
Well, the bollards will.
The bollards will be bollards.
Yes.
They'll actually be mounted in the ground, because if you tell, they can be decorative, but there'll actually be bollards that you can use for.
Equal graded bollards.
Perfect.
And that's near the entrance, right?
Yeah, so that's the entrance.
Can you just point down where the entrance is?
Yes, that's right.
So that'll be the bollards, and then here's these bumpers for the handicapped.
Great. Our next witness is Terrence Coles, our professional planner. Terrence, I'm going to give you the microphone unless you don't want it. And can you briefly review your professional qualifications?
I'm a licensed professional planner, I'm a licensed landscape architect with St. New Jersey, I have forty years' experience in land planning and my son architecture, project manager with the Petty Group.
Great, Madam Chair, we ask you to set Mr. Cole as an expert.
Who's got the other name, for sure?
Mr. Coles, have you evaluated this application specifically to request for a use area?
Yes, I have.
Can you share your evaluation with everyone, please?
Yeah, as Damien frequently previously indicated, we don't feel that the addition of this pickup window in any way affects the conditional use criteria under which the original plan, the original use was approved. So we're simply evaluating the pickup window itself. As Mr. Landis was addressing, the criteria, the positive criteria, we think the facility is particularly suited for this particular feature. As Brian indicated, the only real site adjustment that's needed for that is there's a curved sidewalk area that fucks the building in the area where the window will be located, and that sidewalk will be replaced with a pavement so that the drive can be closer to the building. So there's no expansion to the improvement, the same improvements required to accommodate the drive, so obviously, and there's an existing, the existing drive actually goes along the back of the building as it is, so we think the safety is suited, and according to script and purposes and planning, we think this satisfies the requirement to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, industrial uses. I know it's space both public and private according to respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens, so that's a stated objective of the plan and of the zoning law. And, you know, obviously, this is a new, you know, these are new uses in the state. We think these pickup windows are going to be common with these uses, so it's, let's say, a convenience to the customers sort of in the state of New Jersey. So we think it satisfies the positive criteria of the municipal zoning law. And then we move to the negative criteria. Can the variance be granted without substantial detriment to the public good? Again, there's minor, minor site changes, there'd be undetectable site changes to accommodate this use. It's a low-intensity use, as you've heard, it's not going to deal a lot of stacking, this isn't like a, like a, like a drive-through window where cars are backed up and people are ordering and signage, menu boards, things like that, there's no speaker, so it's a low-intensity use, so we don't think it will have any impact on adjacent properties. And the properties that are impacted by, we'll be able to see this, this part of the site, are commercial properties. The water company has a building adjacent to the back of the building here, and then there's, I think it's a hair salon on the front part. So where the window and the drive, and the stacking is contained, it's not residential use adjacent to that. So we don't see any detriment to the public good associated with the addition of that window. And with regard to the, any detriment to the zone plan or zone ordinance, we haven't seen any, in this case, again, we didn't mention that there are drive-through facilities that are permitted use in the commercial district. And again, these are much more intense drive-through facilities than what would be occurring here. And I think the, one of the reasons I assumed that this needed variance was because the ordinance does differentiate between restaurants with drive-throughs and restaurants without. Some, in this, in this certain restaurant, without a drive-through is permitted use with a drive-through is conditionally permitted. So I think that's associated with the intensity of the use. Drive-through for a restaurant handles a lot more traffic, it has a lot more impacts, so, you know, I'm not, you know, I don't think this type of pickup window is anticipated under the ordinance. So I don't believe that it's contrary to the ordinance in that, you know, it's a lower intensity facility than what normal drive-throughs are projected to be. So I don't see it as a substantially varying intent of the zone ordinance. And also, as Damien mentioned, silent ordinance for this specific use if it allows, if it allows pickup or not. So I think it's a minor, a minor detail to the ordinance, and I don't think it would have any detrimental role.
As it relates to particular suitability, do you agree that the unique setup here with the one-way out because of the angle of the building and the property line also makes this more suitable for a pickup window?
Yes, I guess it's, I mean, it's pretty much an existing traffic pattern. You're very little deviation to that other than, other than the straitening to separate the drive-through from, from the driveway.
Thank you, Mr. Coles.
Mr. Coles, I just have a question for you. I'm thinking would be advantageous for us to try to do something to maybe slow down the traffic flow a little bit? We have, you have quite a bit of circulation going all the way around the building. I guess I'm just concerned with folks entering in off of Clemens Bridge Road. We have a lot of folks, we have, what, about twenty spots on the other side that are going to need to be walking across the pavement to get into the entranceway. And I'm just a bit concerned with folks, you know, just coming in at a, at a speed and just thinking, boom, let me just get around the building to go to the drive-through. I think perhaps maybe we could put some signage or something like.
You could actually add a stop bar and a stop sign right there at the T. No, actually add the drive-through. So, so in other words, instead of people making the turn into that center aisle and thinking no one else is coming to St. Clair?
It's kind of a free-for-all, I visited the site and it's very well suited for what you're doing.
And maybe Mr. Clary, Mr. Sabas can indicate whether they'll, is that acceptable, a stop bar there?
Yeah, sure.
So a stop bar and a stop sign, so before they go full speed into the drive aisle, they will stop there, make a pause, and then go?
I'm just concerned with the, with the speed and the flow of the drive.
So that's going to be at the intersection of the?
Center drive aisle. Center drive aisle.
Center drive aisle and St. Clair Road. On the site, of course. The center drive aisle on the site and St. Clair Road.
And Mr. W, if it's permissible, if you can amend your request, it'd be better to have it right at the edge of the curb line, the stop bar, so could you add that to the request to the borough?
Sure, but would you want the stop sign in the right of way?
It most likely would be warranted, the stop bar and the stop sign in the right of way, so.
So they're actually out there then? There is a stop bar?
There is a stop sign?
Yeah, so there's a stop bar, that was part of the previous approval. So there is a stop bar and a stop sign currently out there.
So never mind. I didn't see it on the plan.
So it was part of the previous approval, so that's why it wasn't indicated on this plan.
Okay.
Because it wasn't something that changed.
Mr. Clary, if you can get to the record plan, let's turn on everything that was previously approved.
It is turned on, but there's a text for it, so this plan was strictly to, all the text on here was to eliminate the changes from what was previously approved. So there is, there is a striping element there on the plans, and if you look very close, you can see a small sign in there. But it is there, I can call it out for priority as existing, just to make it clear on the plan that it is there.
Thank you.
Thank you, so Madam Chair, that concludes our plan presentation.
Any other questions for that witness from the board?
I have one.
Would it help, again, I know nothing about your business or any of it, but what if we had something stating that, hey, drive-through for pre-orders only, or maybe that would help alleviate people getting in line and, you know, hey, let's just drive up or whatever? Again, I'm just throwing it out there. And then the other one is, how big is physically the dimensions of the window itself? Like, it's, like, the counselor mentioned McDonald's, and it's not nothing like that, correct?
It's a drawer, it's a drawer that's.
Right, okay, like you would go, like a pharmacy.
Like a drive-through bag or a pharmacy.
Like I couldn't come up and kick that window in, right?
It's not a window, it's, it's, there's a window, but the product is exchanged through a drawer that goes out and comes back.
I'm just saying, I know kids ride around there all the time on bikes and everything, I don't know if they have access till now, but you know how kids are.
I do.
Yeah, so, all right, that answers my question.
And with regard to the pre-order zone there, that could be added to the directional sign, sure.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, I'm not trying to spend your money, I just think maybe we can eliminate some backups there, you know? Now, you might have three people in line waiting to make a left to go up there, and then all of a sudden they say, hey, for pre-orders only, they can make a right down St. Clair and get out, correct?
Right, yeah, it's a natural process. And there's, they can't make a right.
That's not a two-way?
No, no, one St. Clair. There's no, there's no right turns.
Okay, but there's a right.
But there's a right-hand side, yes, okay.
That kind of brings you back, and I think we can agree, this is illustrated about this application, but is it agreeable, whatever mechanism you need to do, Mr. Clary, to incorporate these onto the whole set? I need, I need one, I need one representative set to be in the zoning office as what is approved. So we're looking at this twenty years from now. So whatever the mechanism, whether it's to update the other set or put it on this, I'll let that up to you. And the only other one, which I did not bring up in my report, because it's not really engineering-related, but is the applicant going to provide the police department with an updated security plan reflecting the window operations? So your ordinance requires a security plan with the police department, and if you could just have that in addition on any approval, that the police department is provided an updated security plan?
Okay.
And I have nothing further, Madam Chair.
What other, any other questions for any of the witnesses or the professionals? Thank you, Mr. Talcuk.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowan?
Uh, I'm.
For the public, yep. We're going to open this meeting to the public, anyone wishing to speak on this application, this application only, please come forward, state your name and address.
I can't stand, so.
We can bring the mic to you, sir, we'll bring the microphone to you.
I got it.
I got it.
I even have public portion highlighted.
Chuck Ever. I don't know. It, it was all in my machine. Is it on? I don't think. It broke it.
We can grab a different one for you, sir.
Oh, I can, I, I just have one question.
We have to have you on record, that's all. She has, she's recording you, what I'm getting at. That's why the microphones are, are here.
Thanks, I'll take it down.
Your name, sir?
Chuck Ever, Twenty-Five Plaza Place. I'm right on the corner of Plaza and St. Clair. I'd like to know what's gonna happen if you have a couple of wackos that do pull up to that drive-in window and don't know about the pre-orders. Where they want, who's gonna inform them they can't get anything, and how they're gonna leave?
They'll go and be able to exit out. If you look, if the drive-in, the drive-in window is closest to the building, and then there's a striped line, and then there is another lane, a bypass lane, they'll be able to go right out the bypass.
They'll probably say, you know, you gotta come inside. Well, they're gonna do a quick U-turn, a quick turn into that parking lot.
I can't testify to that, sir. But there's a bypass lane right there for them to easily just go right, right back out on Clemens Bridge Road and, and come back in and go inside.
Yeah, yeah, they want to.
That's true. I don't, I don't have the answer to their question as far as human nature, but, um, I think, uh, I think it's designed well as far as if that doesn't-
I live right there, and I've been talking to John all, all this time, and I have no problem with anything. But when they said that, you know, it's strictly gonna be a drive-up and pre-order, and somebody pulls up and wants to place an order.
That's why we're adding signage. So we're adding signage. Yeah, we're adding signage that drive-through is for pre-orders only. We just went over that. So there's gonna be signage.
I know that, but I still wanted to ask that question.
Perhaps, sir?
Sir, the applicant has agreed to Title Thirty-nine. So if you see something like that, call the police. I mean, they can enforce it. So if you see them making an illegal turn, turning around, and they're parking it?
Well, I mean, you know, they come up to the drive-in, and they'd say they can't, they can do a K-turn.
No, it's one way. Right, right. So therefore, you, you have the right to call the police. And tell me that, because, I mean, there's clearly marked lanes, very easy access to go out of, like, an easy turn right back in.
I'm retired, and there's gonna be a lot of calls, people coming out of there making that right turn, and I'm gonna be on the phone every time.
And no addresses?
They will address.
I said no addresses when that happens. They, they don't wanna, they don't want this to happen.
I know that. And I've been, I've been, he'll tell you.
Who's he?
John. I've been talking to him since from the beginning. I, I think they wanna try to operate a good business and be good to the neighbors. And, you know, I, I think that, oh, he's been great. I've tried to go over again. He's been great. It's just that, you know, hey, it is what it is. These people are gonna be even high when they go in the store, let alone up to the drive-in. Come on.
Well, if, if they are, that'll be revenue for the Borough when he's write tickets. I mean-
Thank you, sir.
Damian, everyone. Bernie Moore, zoning officer Borough, running me. Uh, one question. Are the cattle gates going down and not going back up? Okay. We have cattle gates locking to parking lots up there. We have no permits for them. No, they're not on any plans. They, they were to keep them off the asphalt, but I didn't know if their plans were to keep them or, okay, they're just temporary, right? And you, and you need a permit for the fence. And all the concrete permits were taken care of earlier. Besides, it's just the fence doesn't need to have a permit yet. Okay?
Appreciate that, Mr. Rowan. Thank you.
Damian, one other thing I saw in Steve's letter was, the fence, is that when it come on adjacent property?
So- So the neighbor has to pull up the fence. So we're going to ask them for permission to put up their property as shown on the plan, which presumably they'll agree since they asked for the fence. If they say no, we're gonna eliminate the fence, because we don't have the right to go on their property without the permission.
Okay, so that, that'll be a condition of, of that installation.
So the permit will come from the other property then? Well, we'll get the permit, but we'll have a letter from them giving permission to put the fence there. It's, it's inches like that.
Yes. But if there's no permission, you'll be-
No, there's no permission. The reason Mr. Sabas put on this is because there was discussion with the neighbors, saying, hey, would you mind adding a fence? No, no problem at all. But we had to show on the plan. And I believe it's slightly relying just because of the other fences and other things that are out in the field.
Were there any other questions before we make the motion?
Well, I'm closing public, public portion.
Saying no one else in the public wishing to speak, I make a motion to close public portion at this time.
Call in favor?
Okay.
Okay, this is an application by, uh, ten, East Clemens Bridge Road LLC to amend the site plan, which was previously approved by this board back in October two thousand and twenty-two for the purpose of gaining permission and a variance to install a pickup window, uh, to the location. Uh, and with other, uh, site improvements which are set forth in the, in the plan submitted and which heard testimony in the C. Um, as we know, in order to, uh, grant a use variance, a de-use variance, you have to weigh the positive and, and the negative criteria. You've heard testimony by Mr. Coles, professional planner from the Petty Group, that it is his opinion that the installation or the granting of a variance to permit a pickup, uh, window will not materially impair our zoning ordinance. If you're satisfied that that is in fact a fact, you can act favorably in this, uh, on this application. Um, there's been testimony by Mr. Coles, too, that this property lot lies in our commercial zoning district, which does in fact permit other, uh, types of drive-in windows, specifically banks, et cetera. Um, so it's not an unusual request to have a pickup window within our, uh, C zoning district. Um, you've heard the testimony of Mr. Clary, and you've heard the testimony of, uh, one of the members of the applicants of the operation, and what the purpose of their request is for. Uh, so if you're satisfied that the negative and positive criteria has been made, um, you would just call for a motion to approve as submitted. With the changes that were represented, that Damian indicated, will, the plans will be revised according to Mr. Box's letter and in accordance with the representation regarding certain additional signage, which was made by the applicants.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve Application Twenty-four dash zero-one with the changes read by Mr. Rowan.
I get that motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Offaly, second by Mr. Woznok. Will we have roll call, please? Ms. Kleiner? Yes. Mr. Offaly?
Yes.
Ms. Cusson?
Yes.
Mr. Buckeye?
Yes.
Mr. Vannell?
Yes.
Mr. Woznok?
Yes.
Ms. Park?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Much to see you. Happy New Year.
See you next time. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Is there any other business to discuss, Ward? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn there. I'll make that motion. Mr. Offaly, Mr. Vannell, on favor? Being adjourned at seven fifty-nine.